Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. This is the regular council meeting of June 27th. The time is 7:30. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Councilwoman Erin.
Here.
Mayor Protam Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilor Orbach.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Grabstein.
I'm here. Thank you. The invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening will be by Mayor Protam Bliss. I ask everyone to stand if you are able, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions that will lead to plans that will move our community forward. Let us remember that this meeting is important because it's filled with tangible opportunities for us to all take action and improve the city. Help us to see the significance of even the smallest piece of positive change and work with us to serve the city and all of its residents who are relying on us, to be their voice and to do our best as we look out for them and their families. Finally, continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is only to make our community a more prosperous one with each passing day. Let us eliminate fighting, quarrels, and partisanship and focus on the things that matter. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. First up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add supervisor's, excuse me, municipal supervisors, municipality tentative agreement to agenda as item 11. A motion to add municipal employee tentative agreement as item 12. And then a motion to add Department of Public Services tentative agreement as item 13.
All right. Thank you. And is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. For these additions, is there any discussion? All right. I just want to make the comment that these are going to go under reports. All right. Seeing no comments, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Items are added. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to meeting open to the public. So this is the opportunity for the public to speak. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes to please address me. And our podium is over there. So if you would like to speak, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Grabstein. I have just a few brief remarks tonight. First of all, I just want to say how great it was last night. The festival in the park returned, the fireworks went on. My family loved it. They loved being up last night watching. It was awesome. DPS did a great job. In fact, I assume I won the award at the park this morning. They were out there in the forest, putting the park together and everything. So DPS did an awesome job. The festival park was this last weekend. We can report with our Juneteenth celebration. And I thought it was a great look from Madison Heights to have a one-two combo. I'll raise three of Juneteenth one weekend, and the festival will start next. Just a quick word about Juneteenth. Our celebration this year was more than doubled. The attendance from last year, we were able to raise more than $25,000 to fund the festival, which was paid for entirely by grants and donations and run by volunteers. I do want to recognize our sponsors, and I don't know if you hear this, I don't know if you've heard of them. Our man's patient sponsor was Hankel. Independent sponsor for Michigan Arts and Cultural Council. Freedom sponsors, Howard Family Design, Liberty Canvas, Puff Canvas, Friends of the Madison Public Library, Meyer, and One Vision Media Group. We also had dozens of individuals, families, from the community businesses who were friends of Juneteenth sponsors. I also want to give a special thanks to the Madison Heights Citizens United Board of Directors, who we worked, they worked hundreds of hours in the past six months to put this together. I just wanted to give them a recognition by name. Erin Ferris, Lori Gerald, Michael Jerome, Howard II, and Kalila Wright. So again, I thank you, Mayor. I know you're out there. You love the people of the city. Thank you to all the council members who are there and city staff members. I think it was a great day, perfect weather. We're looking forward to the next year's celebration already. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address counsel this evening? All right. Seeing no one, do we have anything that's being read this evening? I'm closing public comment.
Okay. This is from Michael Howard. "No one from our team will be able to make the city council meeting tonight." However, that's a little... But we wanted to extend a special thank you to everyone who came out, especially the guys on DPS who helped set the park and stage up. Their hard work did not go unrecognized. Madison Heights is the 61st largest city in Michigan, hosts the largest... Excuse me. Madison Heights is 61st largest city in Michigan, hosts the largest Juneteenth celebration in metro Detroit. That's so progress. Thanks for all your help.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have communications. First is, and only is the resignation of Crystal Fox. Can we just do that? Okay. So can I get a motion to accept the resignation of Crystal Fox from the Environmental Citizens Committee?
Your Honor, yes. I move that we accept the resignation of Crystal Fox from the Environmental Citizens Committee and issue the appropriate things.
All right.
And declare the seat vacant. Sorry.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd just like to comment that Crystal Fox in particular on the Environmental Citizens Committee has been incredibly active, has spearheaded quite a few of the projects and programs that we've been working on at the Environmental Citizens Committee, from the Bloom Project and Native Gardens in the city, our seed library, and all kinds of wonderful projects that she's been part of. Her exit, she has moved out of the city and can no longer serve. So her exit will be deeply felt by the Environmental Citizens Committee. In that vein, I recommend anybody who's interested in environmentalism or any of those kinds of projects, just please apply to become a member of the ICC. We are doing applications in August.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have report from Finance Director for the budget amendments. Ms. Marsh.
The state of Michigan's budget law requires the city council approve any budget amendments. Therefore, the budget amendments are submitted to ensure that the fiscal year 2022 and '23 budgets comply with state law. Staff and I recommend that council approve the proposed budget amendments and appropriate the funds as presented.
All right. Thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I recommend that I make a motion that the council approve the proposed budget amendments and appropriate the funds as presented.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, from the city attorney, the resolution opening marijuana application period.
On June the 13th, city council and the city of Madison Heights adopted ordinance 2181, amending Article 16, Chapter 7, Section 7-308 of the city's Code of Ordinances to amend scoring criteria for the medical marijuana facilities and co-located adult-use marijuana establishments to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of our residents. Section 7-406B allows council by resolution to establish the application period for any available license under this ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this resolution that opens the application period for any available medical marijuana facilities and co-located adult-use marijuana establishment license until August the 12th of 2022 at 11:00 a.m. Applications shall be required in electronic format via flash drive or USB only, providing three data storage devices and a fee of $500 per license type applied for or should be paid at the time the application is submitted.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion from counsel?
Your Honor, I move that we open the application period for co-located medical and adult-use marijuana establishments that will end on August 12th, 2022 at 11:00 a.m.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was going to indicate, Your Honor, that the maker of the motion and support should consider changing it to include adopting the resolution which opens the marijuana application period.
Mr. Bliss? All right. Thank you. Motion.
Your Honor, just one note with the flash drives. That is a particular cybersecurity vulnerability. So let's make sure that all of those flash drives, as they're received, are opened securely by IT off of our network because there is a risk there and they may not know that they have that on the flash drive. But there is a risk of a cyber threat into the city by plugging any of those into any of our machines. So let's just have that safely. Alternatively, in the future, we could open it up with secure links via like Google Drive or Dropbox. Those are more routinely tested and will give us a little bit of flexibility. But nothing on the merits, just more a little nervous about the method of delivery.
We can change it. I mean, it's not, it's just, we can change it on here. I can just change it on there. I mean, I'm just saying it's not too late to change it. We only went to flash drive because the paper copies are too cumbersome. So we can do a different method.
This is administrative. Maybe if we approve this, this is a question for the lawyer. If we approve this, can we administratively change it to do a link or Dropbox?
My suggestion would be, since we're adopting a resolution which specifically says flash drive, my suggestion would be that the resolution be amended to reflect that we would accept it via Dropbox or...
Google Drive.
Or Google Drive.
Yeah. I will amend that in my motion. And I think we can still accept flash drive. But again, let's just make sure that IT opens it on a machine that's not connected to the network to test it first.
Councilor Orbach? Councilor Orbach, do you agree? Okay. So slight change. We'll take flash drives, Dropboxes, links to Google, Google Docs. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Then all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. No. All right. Thank you. Motion carries 6-1. Next up, we have the three items that were added to the agenda. Ms. Marsh.
Yes. First up is the motion to approve the tentative agreement with the supervisors and assistants as the local 1-9-1-7.33.
All right. What is the wish of counsel? Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes. Thank you. Is there support? Your Honor. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All against say no. Motion carries. Item 12.
The tentative agreement with the municipal employees' union.
All right. Can I get a motion from counsel to approve?
Your Honor.
Is there? Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman? Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. And the third one.
Tentative agreement with the Department of Public Services Guild Union.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a, what, can I get a motion to approve? Yes. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Your Honor, I'll second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All against say no. Motion carries. Next up, under bid awards purchases, we have the parcel redevelopment program. Ms. Marsh.
In 2018, the city began working with Oakland County for a tax foreclosure redevelopment program. This program has generated redevelopment of 16 properties in the city before being temporarily deferred due to the pandemic. In 2022, this program has been restarted. Therefore, the city issued an RFP for developers, including a minimum guaranteed investment, an average investment, administrative fees, timelines for completion, and plans for disposition of vacant properties. We received three responses to this RFP, with the best and most complete offer being from HP Snap Investments. HP Snap Investments has participated in the city's program the previous two cycles with very positive results. They included a minimum guaranteed investment of $50,000 and a minimum average investment of $60,000 for houses included on the foreclosure list. This program has been positive for the city and the neighborhoods. And homeowners are required to, so their homes are required to be sold to home occupants with deep restrictions for five years. In accordance with MCL 211.78M1, the city received statutory first round of refusal to purchase the properties that were tax foreclosed on by Oakland County Circuit Court on February the 16th and by the Oakland County Treasurers under Public Act 123 of 1999 as amended. This year, the city has seven parcels on this foreclosure list with a redemption period that ended March the 31st. In order to implement this program this year, two actions are necessary. First, based on the proposal submitted in response to this year's RFP and the proven track record during the past two rounds of parcel redevelopment program, staff and I recommend awarding the parcel redevelopment program to HP Snap Investment for the purchased properties, with an option to extend next year tax foreclosure properties are available pending final legal review of the contract and authorizing the city manager to sign all related documents. And second would be to authorize the city to purchase from Oakland County the foreclosed parcels for the minimum bid, which includes delinquent taxes, interest, and fees, along with any maintenance costs incurred by the Oakland County Treasurer's Office, and to sell those parcels to HP Snap in accordance with the parcel redevelopment program.
All right. Thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll give it a go. I move that we award the parcel redevelopment program to HP Snap Investment for the purchased properties pending final legal review of the contract, also authorizing the city manager to sign all related documents. I'd also like to authorize the city, or does this need to be two motions, or can I do it?
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
I would recommend two motions because the second motion requires five votes to purchase and sell.
Okay.
The first part.
First one, simple, mature.
Okay. All right. Is there support?
Your Honor.
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. And then the second, if you'd like. Mr. Bliss.
Your Honor, yes. I move that we authorize the city to purchase from Oakland County the parcels listed for the minimum bid that includes only delinquent taxes, interest, and fees, along with any maintenance costs incurred by the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. I'd also like to authorize them to sell any of these parcels listed to HP Snap in accordance with the parcel redevelopment program.
I think I should list the parcels for public information and for the record.
Okay.
It's 1600 Oakland Drive. There's three parcels. Parcel number 2512280012, 2512280022, and 2512280023. 27741 Groblin Street, 27847 Hampton Street, 71 West Dallas Avenue, and 26628 Groblin Street.
And I'm just going to clarify that the first one, the parcel, is dash 21, not dash 12. That's okay. Lots of numbers in there. All right. So that was the motion, and these are the parcels. Is there a second?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, Purchasing Director, the Council Chambers Broadcast Equipment Improvements for Civic Center Complex Project.
As part of the Civic Center Complex construction project, City Council Chambers is being relocated. This necessitates a transfer of some of the existing broadcast sound equipment and also provides the opportunity to upgrade select audiovisual equipment in order to provide improved audiovisual capabilities in the new facility. Advanced lighting and sound has serviced the existing broadcast equipment for many years, including the overhaul which took place in 2015. ALS has provided the city with diagnostic information and recommendations to our equipment. They have provided on-call and remote technical assistance throughout the years, and they are intimately familiar with our entire system, making ALS the most qualified to perform this work during the construction and relocation. They assisted partners in architecture and staff in evaluating the best possible approach to moving the existing equipment and installing new audiovisual equipment where appropriate. ALS has provided a quote to install all of the needed equipment for this transfer, including parts and labor to remove the existing equipment and relocate to the new Council Chambers control room. As noted in their overview, the pricing does not include the moving of the cable drops from Wow or Comcast. However, the pricing does include two 65-inch LED monitors, a new processor, and a touchscreen controller for the recording and broadcast. Staff and I respectfully request that city council approve a contract with Advanced Lighting and Sound for this project in an amount of $18,797 as being in the best interest of the city.
All right. Thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor.
Yes. Mr. Bliss.
I move that we approve the contract with Advanced Lighting and Sound for this AV project in the amount of $18,797, with the request in my motion that we give a 24-hour period for any review or comments from ITAC.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Please.
Just a clarification in that, in that motion. ALS has done a lot of really great work for the city through the years, and I have no doubt that the equipment that they're proposing is exactly what we need. But when we did the overhaul back in 2015, ITAC had a pretty lengthy meeting about it. And so I just want to make sure that they have the opportunity to reply back if there's another piece of equipment that we need or if something on here might be more than we need or less than we need. So just giving them one last opportunity. And that can just be through email. It doesn't have to be through email.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have two ordinances. First one is 2183, the Property Maintenance Code. This is the second reading. Ms. Marsh.
The ICC Property Maintenance Code is the code followed to inspect and maintain all of our existing structures and properties in the city. Legal counsel has reviewed the ordinance and recommends that we amend it to adopt the ICC Property Code 2021 edition on second reading.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve, to adopt the ICC Property Maintenance Code 2021 edition on the second reading.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Your Honor, I'll second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. And then next ordinance, 2186, the International Fire Code. This is also the second reading.
The city's Code of Ordinances incorporates by reference the International Fire Code for establishing the standards for regulating and governing safeguarding of life and property from fire and explosive hazards. The International Fire Code is routinely updated every few years, and this amendment updates referencing to the most recent published standards. Legal counsel has reviewed the ordinance and recommends city council adopt the ordinance 2186, 2021 edition of the International Fire Code on second reading.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve? Counsel?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2186, 2021 edition of the International Fire Code on second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. And then last up, we have the minutes from the regular meeting on June 13th and the special meeting on June 20th. Can I get a motion from counsel, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting on June 13th and the special meeting on June 27th?
20th.
20th.
20th. All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Support, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve both the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those against say no. Motion carries. And that concludes the regular portion of this meeting. We are now at closing comments. Councilwoman Erin.
Thank you, Your Honor. That was a very quick meeting. As you all can hear from the sound of my voice, I had way too much fun yesterday. Actually, this whole weekend. This has been, the last three weekends in Madison Heights have been really busy with the 11th being the Pride Festival, the 18th being Juneteenth, then last night was the fireworks, and then this weekend is the 4th of July. So I just want to give a great big shout out to everyone that has helped in any of those events in any way. But honestly, yesterday, Brooke Heisler, she did a phenomenal job in setting up everything for the festival in the park last night. The band was awesome. Councilman Wright and I just kept saying how great that band was. They really did a phenomenal job. And when I spoke with Cory, I said, oh, DPS did a good job. He said, no, this all goes to Brooke. She did everything from setting up the food trucks to the band, to making certain that our tables were set up. So great job, Brooke. And that's all I have, because I don't have a voice right now.
Yeah, yeah. So I have a voice, finally. I missed all of those great events. I was down with the fun Delta variant of COVID. Nice breakthrough infection. I, you don't have to worry. Three days in a row negative tests. We're good to go. But yeah, that was, that was an experience. You dodged it for a couple of years, and then you get hit. But no, everything from the outside, I mean, I tried to watch some, some different videos from, from Juneteenth and the festival. It was actually the first festival in the park that I have missed, outside of it being canceled, but the first one that ever existed that I've missed in my entire lifetime since I was a baby. So that, that stings a little bit, but you know, I'll be back for the next one. Where's some wood to knock on? I don't know. But, and, and I want to give, I want to give some kudos as well to Juneteenth. It looks like Citizens United ran an incredible event. I'm sad that I missed it, but I'm looking forward to next year.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Wright?
I expected you to kept going. I was like, I like to just echo the sentiments of what Toya was saying earlier about Festival at the Park, Festival in the Park. I was not trying to like get in the groove of the music, but I found myself dancing a lot. So superb job to Brooke and to DPS. I too wanted to congratulate Cory and had a similar conversation to Councilwoman Erin. So that was awesome. It was awesome to see our park so alive, too. So fantastic job by our police and by DPS and everyone. So, and Anna was out there taking photos. So it was, it was just, it made our city look fantastic. We had, some of us had tables, and to just see people who came to the event, it wasn't just people from Madison Heights. It was people from Madison Heights, Sterling Heights, Royal Oak. So great job on that. Juneteenth was also a fantastic event. Kudos to citizens, Madison Heights Citizens United, Kevin, Michael, Kalila, Erin, Lori Gerald, and the crew. And also, just a reminder, the HREC is partnered with them on that event, and it's important to remember that. I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, the city stay a part of that event and that the meeting, it's nice for us to celebrate, you know, this new national holiday and kind of lead the way for others to be a good example for that. And so it's been a lot of fun things going on here, but it's been a lot of people who've been going through some, some things. Not me personally, so I don't want to say I'm talking about me. But just, just remember to be kind. There's a lot of celebration going on, but there's a lot of tough things going on in this world. And so we have to remember, as much as we want to celebrate the good times, remember that there are a lot of people struggling right now, a lot of different things that they can't control. So just remember to be kind.
No comments, Shana, this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Marsh?
No. Clerk's office this evening?
Yes. August 2nd, primary election ballots are available in the city clerk's office. If you need an application for an absentee ballot, please fill one out online or send one in in the mail or stop on by. Also, you should have gotten your new voter ID card. Every resident in the city is getting, every voter in the city is getting a new voter ID card. That is because our legislative district numbering has changed. Also, there's been a couple precinct location changes, so please make sure to check it. And if you have any questions about it, feel free to call us. We are required by law to send out application, or voter ID cards to everybody that's on the qualified voter list. There might be a person that has moved from your location and is no longer there, but they didn't change their address with the Secretary of State's office as far as voting. If that does happen, just give us a call so that we can mark them to be verified. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Orbach?
I, I want to echo the sentiments of everyone about the last events. This last month, they've been wonderful. My kids were dancing in the park last night, and my son said, this is amazing. So it's been their own, you know, my friends are eight years old, and it's been since they were six before we've been able to really have a festival like that in the park. And I don't think they really remembered it. And so being out there and doing that, I mean, they've been to some of our smaller events, but this was something really special. So I just thank everyone, especially Brooke Heisler, for her work. So I just thank everyone, especially Brooke Heisler, for her work on that. And I did, after the Juneteenth event, especially like right after the opening ceremony, I just want to comment on the powerful work that you guys, the planners that put together the program at the beginning, powerful work and the powerful words that were said at the, at the opening of our Juneteenth celebration. I had folks, especially a lot of the elected officials that had come, came to me afterwards and said, "This was one of the most powerful Juneteenth celebrations I've ever been to." And these guys have been to a lot of celebrations. And, you know, I had a couple say, "This is going to be on my list every year. I'm going to always come back to this one because it's such a great event." And, you know, they just especially expressed the, that the, it wasn't just words, there was kind of imploring from the stage to, for everybody there and everybody in our community to participate in the work of Juneteenth, which is, you know, reconciliation and, and looking at yourself and seeing how you can make changes. And I thought that was a really powerful way to begin that celebration. So I want to say especially thank you to everyone who planned that opening ceremony. All the rest of the great things, it was so much fun. Pride, the Pride picnic was great, like just the folks that came out was fantastic. My temporary tattoo just finally wore off like last week, so. And then, upcoming, we've got native plant sales and the book sales from the Friends of the Library, and Trail Tunes is coming up in August, like we've, I've got to take that one back, Trail Tunes is not coming up in August. It's soon, but it's more, more happening, and so it's really wonderful. I'm really happy to be part of this community and to celebrate with our community. You know, I want to encourage, as a clerk said, you know, get your absentee ballot if you're planning to participate in our democracy this year. Get your absentee ballot and get ready to vote. This August election, primary elections are so important, so get out and vote, do your research, and find out about what, what you're going to be voting on. And then, I do want to comment on the recent repeal of Roe v. Wade. I am, and I know many people like me are feeling upset and frustrated and ready to take action in various ways, and I'm just, my, my word here is, you know, the biggest way that we can take action right now is to vote and to support those people who are going to work towards the resolution that we can have here in the state of Michigan. If it's coming back to state legislature, then we need to make sure that our state legislature is representative of the, of the values of the people of this community. So please make sure that you vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Fleming?
Yeah, so I wanted to give an update on the Crime Commission. We had a meeting last, this last month. In the meeting, the new chairman is Martha Covert. She's looking forward to planning a few things. One of the things that we approved in our, in our meeting was that we're going to be inviting the Attorney General of Michigan, Dana Nessler, to come give us a speech about consumer protection and fraud and scams that are happening right now. I think that's going to be really good information, especially for everybody, actually. And we don't have a date right now. We're still communicating with the AG's office to plan a date that's going to happen, probably in the fall time. So that's what's happening with the Crime Commission. And then, I just want to say that July is Minority Mental Health Month. I think it's really important that we pay attention to everybody who has mental health issues and trying to get them help. I know the county offers a lot of programming for mental health, and I'm going to try to reach out to some of them and see if we can link up our city with the county and try to bring some of these programs to our, our city with, you know, and partner with them. So that's all I have for today.
All right, thank you. Ms. Soltes?
Thank you, Your Honor. Isn't Martha incredible? She's been around forever, and she just, just keeps on giving, so our hat goes off to her. And two other just quick things. Last time when I spoke, I just want to apologize if I offended anybody or upset anybody about what I said. I certainly didn't mean anything in that way, so I apologize. And also, I want to give a shout out to Sheriff Bouchard, who got the sheriff of the ward from Oakland County, excuse me, from the Michigan Sheriff's Association. So I don't know if that's the second time, but he certainly deserves it, so thank you.
All right, thank you. So I just have a couple of things. You know, we, we had a couple of events that everyone's talked about, so I'm not going to. And we have other events that are coming up, and I just want to sort of throw out there that the bulk of the events that we have in the city aren't ones that the city actually hosts, it's private groups that come in. And I know that's the same with other cities in the area. The city might do part of it, but for the most part, it's private groups that are doing it. So if anyone wants to, or knows of a group that's looking for something that wants to host here, have them reach out to us, because someone mentioned that there were people not just from the city and the neighboring communities, but from outside. And, and I know that because I, I was talking to some people who don't live particularly close who came to this, and they were just going on about how great that civic park is to host this. You know, we had the stage and we had all the space out front, and then, oh, I didn't know you had all this out back as well. And because we had the fireworks, there was a section that was, was, you know, that you couldn't get to, but if we didn't have the fireworks, we would have had even more space. So we do have the space, and it's great for, of course, our community, it's great for the community around us, and it's great for the businesses in the area as well. You know, people come here and then they'll go to the businesses. So if you have an event that you're, you're thinking of, you're looking for a location, check us out. We, we've got a lot of stuff going on here. And that, that's really it. I do want to make a note of mental health. Having a month designated to mental health or related to anything is something that drives me crazy, not to make the pun on mental health, but it, it does because it's something that we need to address this every day. So when someone says, oh, it's this month, we need to pay attention to it, and, you know, it's over now, so I think May was mental health, and so now we don't care. But no, we do because it's minority mental health, but then in July, we won't care. I think it's something that we really need to be aware of every day, and I think part